Committee of the whole, chairman's gonna make a comment here. We have something very important going on at eight o'clock. I hope everybody has it taped. So we'll open the meeting with the roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Here.
Mr. DeBonte.
Here.
Mrs. Martinez.
Here.
Mrs. Pope.
Here.
Mrs. Squires.
Here.
Mr. Schultz is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm looking around for the flag over here on the screen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move to approve the agenda. Roll call vote, please. Second.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Roll call.
And seconded by Mr. Anderson.
Correct.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
We have six yes, motion carries.
Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Visitors allowed up to three minutes for anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. Consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per exhibit A numbers twenty-seven, twenty-nine through thirty-two as posted, and athletics activities and volunteers per exhibit B numbers B dash four and B dash five as posted. The payment of bills dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and seven cents, and regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
I move for the WTH Board of Education to move to the committee of the whole for the purpose of the meeting. Voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. We're now in the committee of the whole. Presentation.
All right, I think our first presentation tonight is the admin group on restorative practices because at first. Come up here. We got a couple mics here. You might have to bend down to them.
Good evening. We're here to talk about restorative practices and I'm gonna introduce the committee members that are part of this project. Our group is comprised of Noemi Zapata right here. She's a dean at the Oak Plain Campus, Deb Perry, a dean at the Oak Plain Campus, Zach Begon, a dean at the Almond Campus, Hector Barrero, our director of security, and then myself, Nate Karasek, one of the deans at the Oak Plain Campus. Yep, so this is the slide I believe that everyone has had an opportunity already to take a look at. I just wanted to kind of touch base on where we're at in this process for the program, for our practice. For presentations that are in August, we as deans presented to our staff at the opening day meetings that we had with our staff to review what restorative practices were and then would talk about repair conferences and we're gonna, we're gonna be going and talked about professional development. We also are continuing to offer repair conferences with teachers for things like insubordination or disrespect. Those are some of the things that we use them for. We are going to be training all of our student services members next month, I think it's in October, where we have, we're gonna be sharing with them how to run a repair conference so that they can kind of create more capacity for our organization to be able to have more of these when needed. And then we're going to utilize the department meeting times for PLTs in order to get more professional development. So the student services members will also be going into PLTs and then doing kind of a one-on-one professional development for them, providing information and then answering questions. A little bit more intimate as opposed to being in a big setting where everybody is just kind of sitting and getting. So they'll be a little bit more intimate and better.
So the basic principles of repair conferences is to focus repairing relationships where harm may have been caused between teacher and student or student and student. It's a way for us to intervene specifically with something like disrespect where we want the students to be able to work with the teacher, communicate effectively, same with the teacher and students so that they can both go back into the classroom, start anew with having better understood each other. So it includes, you know, the student being reflective and we really try and integrate the worn weight tenants for being respectful, showing empathy and kindness towards one another, communicate and collaborate effectively, and then establishing healthy relationships. This is one of the tools that we provide for the teachers and students. So when, once they've agreed to have a repair conference, it's, it's not mandatory, but it is definitely a tool that will help them be better prepared so that we can have a good conversation once we're in that, the throes of the repair conference.
Essentially, how do we measure success with any initiative, right? Especially with restorative practices and repair conferences. So in the past, we've used it quite a bit with peer mediations, with peer-to-peer conflict, but we haven't used it as a consistent intervention with teachers and students with one of us present. So we've been running that as a dean's team, but as Nate talked about, expanding our capacity with teachers and making sure everyone's prepared. So how we're gonna measure our success is kind of based on the data here. So we wanted to start with, what are the number of repeat offenders? So if students in a class, why are they getting multiple referrals from the same teacher and why that's occurring, right? This data was nice to see the numbers, but it didn't give us as much as we hoped when you're looking at the individual characteristics of a student. So then, as we go through this on a monthly basis, we collect discipline data, right? And in that discipline data, we are now gonna track how many repair conferences are happening with a teacher and student each month so we can track that number and see how many interventions are actually being implemented. Now, lastly, the most important piece of data is following a repair conference, was there a repeat in the behavior? So did this intervention actually work? So for instance, if a student is displaying apathetic behavior over and over and over again in a class, the teachers get frustrated, they've called home, they've worked with the student one-on-one, they've written the kid up, the interventions haven't worked, we're now gonna go to that repair conference to talk about, what Noemi said here was to really get those two together, have them gain and earn respect for one another, help them understand both perspectives, right? The teacher felt disrespected for some reason by the behavior and the student felt singled out or disrespected for some reason by the teacher behavior. And when that communication happens, we, we understand how the behavior is impacting those and the others around them. And then the final piece, which is the most important piece, is we come up with a plan and how we're gonna support that student and teacher moving forward so that everyone understands the expectations. So an easy strategy, for instance, would be the students distracted by their phone, right? Put your phone up, it's not in your possession, so you're not tempted by it or distracted. A more challenging behavior might be strategies a student needs to work on with the social worker, right, to gain some strategy. So it would be informing the teacher of that strategy, how they can best support it. Or if any other unwanted behavior continues, what do those consequences look like? And then, that's when the measurement really comes into play. So was there any repeated behavior in that classroom with that same teacher? After, on our short data span we had last year, we started about in March with an uptick in this and we saw, probably I would say there wasn't a huge amount of data points, but roughly seventy-five to eighty percent of the time it worked. Students went back to that class and there was no repeated referrals or behaviors. So that's the ultimate goal. Student messes up, they have the intervention in place and then the plans in place and then the repeated or unwanted behavior goes away and there's no more referrals from that teacher. If there are continued referrals, then we have to get more creative and try another intervention. But usually getting them together, having a shared understanding, understanding their perspectives creates compassion and grace and respect for one another and then they can operate in the classroom effectively.
I gotta interrupt you. You said repeatedly the same classroom and same teacher.
Yes.
What happens if you have a student that makes multiple problems over different teachers in different classrooms? Do you track that? How do you, does that modify how you approach it?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we would, so if, I don't know how much you guys know about our MTSS and our tiered interventions. So like tier one is what's available to all students. Tier two, we would put this under a tier two intervention. So it would be a second layer of defense kind of. And then if that, students having that many referrals across multiple teachers, they go into the tier three bucket and then we have more intense interventions with the support teams and everybody else on staff here. That would wrap around that student and teacher and help them out.
And one other piece of information is that it's repeated behavior with the same teacher. So there may be different behaviors that come along. So some of the data that we did come across, a student did have a repair conference with the teacher, but then we also noticed that they had two or three more referrals for that same teacher. But it was for a different, completely different thing. Like, for example, one was a disrespect and so we had a repair conference with that teacher and the student, but then later on, they got a cellphone referral. So they were completely different behaviors.
And if you have an opportunity to look at that data later on and as the year goes on, you'll see we track number of referrals from that exact same teacher and the number of total log entries. So that would be all behaviors. And we're hoping to see a decrease in both, but more particularly and specifically with that same teacher.
Two things that I would add. I did provide for the board a draft dashboard for tracking mechanisms. It includes tracking not only the actions that we're doing, but Zach mentioned, hopefully you'll be able to see data along the year. So some of the data that we're tracking is included in that dashboard. That's one thing I would note. The other thing I would just like to brag about with this team, I went back to their driver diagram. When this team back in the winter created this driver diagram, their global goal or their aim for this was to improve, improve student behavior through, was to improve student behavior. They initially, right now their change ideas are highlighted in blue. They just described those, but they initially wanted to prioritize leveraged panorama to improve communication flow. And they went through some brainstorming ways to try to measure progress and they had a hard time figuring out what are we gonna be able to measure and track on a monthly basis to see if our efforts are improving something? And they decided it was gonna be too hard to measure if that specific strategy was impacting something, so they changed. And over the summer, they said, hey, let's, let's do something a little bit differently. And I'm really proud of this group for recognizing that they need to pick, or the importance of picking strategies that they can measure, reflect on, not just at the end of the year, but regularly. So they've got, this is a really powerful example of, you can look at data every week, every month, every quarter, at the end of the semester, to be tracking their changes. It's a really, really cool example of being introspective as a group and trying to make sure we identify the right strategies. So I'm really proud of them.
That's fantastic, yeah. When, if we're looking at this data, for me, it would be helpful to have some kind of baseline data because I have no idea what's an ordinary number of referrals or repeats or whatever. So to see how this is working, I would. Well, I guess it depends on what you're showing me. Yeah, and what you want me to understand. But if, if, if I'm trying to understand if this kind of intervention is working, I need to see data from one year prior when there was no intervention. What was an ordinary frequency of referrals? Do you understand what I mean? Because I'm not in the school system and so I don't have any idea what's normal.
Yeah.
Okay. My second question is, in a repair conference, would it ever be an outcome that a teacher might gain some new understanding of the student and make some adjustment in how they do something?
Absolutely, yes. That's one of the main goals. Right, it's the whole purpose of the conversation is to be a conversation so that both parties understand what the harm was and then articulate what their feelings are and how they're approaching the class and why, how they approach the problem and what they're gonna do moving forward. So I strongly believe that it takes two people to have a relationship. So because of that, there's some culpability for either not noticing or not understanding the student well enough. And so being able to reflect on that and, and make adjustments if needed does happen. And we've had teachers recognize that when we've had a repair conference.
Let the teacher know what they're feeling, thinking, where they're coming from goes a long way.
Why they did the behavior that they did, sometimes it's like, oh, I had no idea that calling you out in front of the entire class was gonna make you super embarrassed and that's how you're gonna respond. So, and then we make a plan and say, well, here's what we'll do. We'll come by you and say, if I'm noticing that there's a behavior, I'm gonna come stand next to you or I'll, I'll tap on your desk or I'll put up my finger, whatever it is so that that student recognizes that the behavior is not, is disrupting the class.
Right. For example, this morning I had a repair conference and we were talking about moving forward, what's the plan? How, if you have a question, how will you ask that question? And the student said, would it be okay if I wrote it down on a Post-it and just gave it to you when you stopped teaching and if you saw the Post-it? And the teacher's like, yeah, that works, absolutely. So it was, it's, it really is finding something that's gonna work for both and they can go at it really with a new perspective and like a new, like a renewed respect for each other.
Related to that, loaded question. If you have a set group of students and one teacher has thirty repair councils and another has two, do you talk to that teacher or is there a problem there or is that addressed or even noticed?
Yeah, if it's a common behavior.
Very good question.
I'd like to ask loaded questions.
I think that's what's cool about the repair conferences is both parties, both stakeholders are involved, they're learning something and growing together. So it's not a, you messed up, you messed up, nobody's pointing the finger, but both parties can admit their faults and admit their strengths and their weaknesses and then come together and find a solution. So I, I've never found myself in that situation.
We have, I have. So we have had some teachers that have had more repair conferences than others. And some of it's at the request of the teacher too because they're struggling with a particular class or something like that. And maybe that group of students just together is, is challenging for that teacher and it's just beyond that teacher's skillset at the time. But everybody likes to, everybody believes that anybody can grow. So all of these experiences are helping everybody grow through it. So if one person has thirty repair conferences and another one has zero, we're not looking at the thirty repair conferences saying this teacher's broken. We're looking at, they may need some more support for whatever reason and then help them get through it, but in the.
They'd also look at the zero.
Well, the zero, the zero we look at too and that doesn't mean that that teacher's doing everything perfectly either. It's just that their class may be a different makeup of students or they just aren't working the way that, you know, I, I don't know.
Anybody looks at numbers, you look for, you look for weird numbers, numbers that are out of whack. That's all.
Yeah, I think Susan touched on some of my thoughts as you were presenting. I'm, I'm super happy to hear that we're implementing this with the student-teacher relationships. I think that's probably the most important in a lot of educational settings possibly. And we just got out of a DEI meeting where we were shown a graph and it, it was a pyramid and I think someone called it an iceberg. And, you know, at the top is the effects and you can see the effects. And working in healthcare, you know, we talk about behaviors also, but it's dementia behaviors or serious mentally ill behaviors and, you know, we're trained to know that behaviors are always a, you know, usually an ask for help when someone can't communicate something correctly, right? And how, you know, is it a one conference? Who's involved in the conference? Who mediates the conference? Is it sometimes a multi-step conference to try to identify? Like, is that student just really struggling in the class and has frustration and is acting out? Like, for instance, a dementia resident can't tell you they need to go to the bathroom so they start, you know, hitting on other people or whatever. Like, I mean, that's my world. That's how I translate things in my head. But I mean, can you give me an idea of, like, is it just a one-time conference? Or is there a way to look at root cause analysis?
Right now, we have had just one conference and so far what we've found is that the relationship is restored back to a point where. Our opportunities though, because sometimes, like what we've learned over time is that when you're, when you're trying to change a behavior, you learn something new, it takes a lot of times to practice that. And sometimes some people take longer than others and everybody goes at their own pace. So we've also cautioned teachers that although we have a conference, it may not fix it. And one of the things that we always say at the end is, what happens when this happens again? If it happens again?
Yeah, how are you gonna handle it differently?
Right, and what are we gonna do moving forward?
On both sides?
Yes.
On both sides.
Right.
And sometime, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You, you asked how it's initiated. Sometimes it does start off as a behavior referral. And it's not, a detention may not fix that behavior or address it, but we want the teacher to, to be heard and seen and the student as well. So just depending on what the, what the referral is for, we might say, would you be willing to have a conversation with the teacher? And saying, reaching out to the teacher, you know, they'd like to have a conversation about this and see what can move. Doesn't mean that there won't be a consequence, but, but it's definitely, the point is to repair that harm. Whatever, if the teacher was feeling disrespected and that's why they wrote the referral, so it's, it's definitely a starting point.
Yeah, I guess I, I would almost like to hear less focused on eliminating the behavior and more focused on the root cause of the behavior. You know what I mean? Like, so, yeah. Right.
Yeah, it's a giant umbrella. This is one strategy we're focused on, that we wanna grow, that we think is effective. With the repair, with the multiple behavior referrals and students who are troubleshooting to try to find the root cause, we have our student services team process, we have other processes in place with the counselors, social workers, psychs, all the case managers, all the other support services, special education services. So that's where more of what I think you're getting at is the finding the root cause is more in that process where this is something, and in this small initiative, we're trying to grow that fits in with everything else.
Thanks, team. They're doing good work. I'm really proud of them. The second thing coming up, Yessenia, the second thing that we're just doing a quick update on for the board is our diversity, annual diversity update. So our DEI committee, I think I've got the first couple slides and I'll pass it off. Our DEI committee has a tiered structure. We have a steering committee that meets a handful of times during the year. We met right before tonight's meeting. That includes parents, staff members, a few board members and some students. Their role is to oversee the process and be an accountability arm for the master plan. So we're providing, we're reporting to them specifics on the master plan and some of our initiatives when we meet with them. We have a learning team. It's a group of, I think Susan's on the team and then we've got a handful of staff members. They're working specifically with Midwest Equity, Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center out of Indiana to learn how to do root cause analysis and identify specific strategies to help us with our equity, diversity initiatives. So they're receiving some training and their role is to help the diversity committee as a team be better at planning. We have an implementation team that is staff members primarily. We have an implementation team that is staff members primarily, I think all staff members. We invited our students to be on that team, but they're meeting during the day, a handful of times during the year, to whatever action planning we need and implementation of action plans they're working, meeting to make sure that happens on the ground. Right now, their focus is on executing our third-party audit, our equity audit that's happening. And then we have the administrative team that makes sure that our annual planning is aligned to our DEI initiatives. We identify students to be on the different committees and then we report to the school board and to the community. So that's how our structure of that diversity committee works. Let's see, the steering committee members are on the slide, I'm not going to read them all. But we meet, we met tonight, we meet in February and we'll meet in April. In February, we'll be getting the results from the equity audit, we'll start some action planning, we'll finalize that in April. And this is where you take over?
So in February, Joey Olenek, Marilyn Huckabee, Susan Stires, Yolanda Fulton and I began working with the Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center. It's an educational research and service center located in Indiana University, like Danny just said. It is funded by the U.S. Department of Education under Title IV of the Civil Rights Act to provide equity-focused technical assistance to states, districts, public schools and other responsible agencies focused on systemic improvements to ensure educational access, participation and positive outcomes for students who have been historically marginalized based on race, sex, national origin or religion at the request of school boards and other responsible governmental agencies. This is a year-long partnership where the goal of this work is to build the district's capacity and doing strategic planning through the lines of diversity, equity and inclusion. The learning team has had three in-person, day-long sessions in Indianapolis. As you can see, each session focused on different learning objectives. And we will be continuing our partnership during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So throughout our discussions within the committee, we determined that it would be important to conduct an audit of the district in order to help identify strengths and areas in need of improvement. In the spring, we began our partnership with MSM Global. From April to June, they conducted a document and policy review. From September to November, they will be meeting with focus groups, conducting a staff survey and then complete an analysis of their findings. And then December through February, they will present their findings to the board and work with the leadership team and DEI committee to facilitate a strategic planning session. At the start of this school year, the staff members listed on the left-hand side of the page volunteered to join our committee. And they will be working with me and MSM Global Consulting to implement the audit and participate in the strategic planning process once the audit has been completed.
All right, so I'm going to talk about, this is exciting because I was actually a part, it was a lot of us a part of the DEI committee before COVID and things like that. And we had all these plans and we didn't scrap them. We looked, Danny looked at the, the plans and our, the people that our partnerships looked at the plans and we could move forward. So we improved on them, enhanced them. And post-referendum, and these, these are things that were in the plans as well. The addition of two deans, one on each campus, has been, I'm a dean here. It's very helpful, I just wanted to say that, I'll put that plug in. And increase in certified teachers and E.L. license and bilingual aides. We have the new position and I know she's been here, the multilingual and family engagement director has been great. Reinstated, like I said, the DEI committee so that we can move forward. We've had some culturally responsive instruction training, PDs, the partnership with both the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center and MSM. This has been important with us too, the student voice opportunities. We have so many students that want to be a part of and they are so highly intelligent and give us a different insight. So, and this is all supported by our DEI master plan. Some other, some areas of focus that we're going to look at are the student champion programs. Schuler is, is no longer. And it was very, it was a, a good place for students and they had mentors and they were able to have tutors and things like that and it's not in our schools anymore. But we are contracting with other outside agencies like My Brothers Keeper, which is a Obama Foundation that works with students of color and implementing that. Academic intervention courses providing assigned lunchtime supports in four academic content areas. So trying to find time for students just to remove those barriers, because all students can't come after school. All students can't afford a tutor. They're different, they have different lifestyles and things like that. So to remove that barrier, for, instead of a full lunch period, they will be with a certified teacher in those four academic content areas. Have instructional coaches, teachers who, teachers who coach other staff. I won't go into repair conferences because you did a great job with that. Facilitating relationship, repair aligned to restorative practices. And like they said, this is just a part of it. There's a whole restorative practices that we're going to go step by step and implement. So you'll be hearing more about different strategies and things like that in the automatic placement of students in AP and honors courses.
So when we first met in September, work that had already been completed, work that was in progress and work that we wanted to kind of focus on. And so what I think Danny shared with you guys, kind of the work that we've already completed from that master plan. So these are our focus points for the next year.
So automatic placements for AP, that's coming from, I believe, a state level where they are having school districts based off of different, I believe, like numbers that they hit in testing, pushing them to kind of challenge themselves and place them at a higher level of academic rigor, I guess. So that's something that was identified in the master plan, but is also now a state ISB initiative.
If the kid goes, no, Giza, I don't want to be an AP class.
Students, students can opt out, but they're initially placed in a higher level class.
I would hope that that would be a conversation that they'd be having with all of us.
I could just picture the conversation, I have to do more work.
Steve, I think it's just replacing an opt-in system with an opt-out system.
I'd encourage, I'd encourage the board members to look at the dashboard to kind of understand there are some hurdles that we've seen. And you can see really specifically what areas of that master plan we're currently doing, which ones we've done and which ones we just haven't moved on, because there are a handful that we have not moved on at all in the last few years. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, that, that is all of our presentations. I'm going to open it up for Tony and Susan to lead a conversation with the table. I'm going to re-invite any parents that are here, community members, if they want to jump up. You can jump up and be part of the conversation.
Not all at once, though. Hey, you guys, before you guys leave, I really like what you're doing.
Yes.
I like taking chances and I know we've been digging out of holes for a long time. And you guys are, you know, have an opportunity to move forward and you're grabbing. Come on in.
You got a seat here too, you got a seat over there.
Come on in.
Come on.
I'm not coming over there.
Personally invite you. No, you might as well, you're the only one sitting over there, come on now. Now you're the oddball out, see?
All right. Thank you.
It doesn't bite, I get it.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. This is, it's fun to have some, have some people here with us.
For once.
Yeah, we're usually talking to ourselves. Okay, so Tony and I are the student committee when we have meetings like this, I guess, is what we are, yeah. So tonight, we wanted to kind of host us having a discussion about how we're doing, what's going well and what are some things that we can do to improve on the way that we are serving all students. So these presentations that we just heard, I think, were a good starting point, celebrating a lot of things that we have been able to do since the referendum. To add some services that serve all the students, like having another dean at each campus, I think is a good example of, that's, helps everybody. And building our staff, our bilingual staff, you know, serving a specific portion of our population that needed. You know, needed, we needed to have more staff to work with them. Does anybody have anything else they would like to say about what they think is going well? It's always nice to start talking about what's going well. Nice to have students coming and talking to us too. Okay, so then let's move on to talk about some of the things, areas where we see opportunities for improvement. What are maybe some parts of our student population that we feel like there's opportunities for us to serve them in ways that we have, we are not right now? So I'll just stop there and see what people have to say. And this, especially if you're not a regular attendee at our board meetings, parents and community members, this would be a great time for you to tell us what's on your mind.
What made you come here? What's, yeah, what's on your mind?
Do all of you guys have kids in the district?
Yeah, maybe we should have everybody introduce themselves.
That would be helpful.
Can we have everybody introduce themselves? Miguel, could you introduce yourself to the group?
I'm Miguel Morales, I'm president from the B-PAC. Okay, my son is in Almond, the last grade.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for inviting me.
I'm Priscilla Vasquez, I'm the bilingual secretary of both campuses.
Hi, my name is Leslie Garcia, my daughter is Kathy Forero, she's in eleventh grade in Almond. Thank you for inviting me, thank you so much.
I'm Kayla Graves and I'm with United Way of Lake County and my son graduated in May.
Congratulations.
Hello, I'm Tasia Fields and my son is a freshman this year.
Oh, good.
Can you maybe help us, help me understand a little bit more about what specifically worked for you with the open house?
I, I felt very, I don't like math. And I walked out of my daughter's math class and I was like, holy cow, I actually want to like learn algebra right now. I am an educator, so being in the classroom, the teacher had whiteboards all around the room and these really cool posters to help the kids, because coming out of COVID, I know it's very hard to get kids to talk to each other instead of their phones. So it was like, I don't even remember, I even took a picture of it and told her, hey, I took a picture of your room, I'm not being a creeper. But it was really cool, there was just like steps of like how you have a conversation. And I chatted with her quick afterwards, like, tell me how you're using those, that's really cool. But every teacher felt, every single teacher my daughter had, had over twenty years of teaching experience and they were still super excited about teaching. And I don't feel like we see, I mean, it's hard, right? So to me, that was really refreshing. A lot of them were very understanding of kids in the sense of like math was saying, I want your homework, I always want it done. If you give it to me within the unit, that's awesome, but I'm not punishing you. So some of the things I heard from the DEI committee, no kids have stuff after school. I just appreciated a lot of talk like that from many of the teachers. Not, not all of them, there were still some that were like, if I don't have your homework, it's half credit tomorrow. But there was a lot of understanding of what I think our kids manage on the day-to-day, which I would argue was more than. That, but it just was really welcoming, I guess.
Yeah, so that's a great starting point, Lisa, thank you. It sounds like open house for you has been a good way to, for you as a parent to connect with the teachers.
Yeah, and I know that not, we don't always have a great attendance.
Sure, so what are, what are other ways either that you have been able to connect with someone who works in Warren as a parent? You know, with a teacher or an administrator or any of the staff person? Or a way that you feel like you maybe would like a connection, but you haven't been able to make one?
Say, I also attended the open house and it was a very positive experience for me as well. It was very refreshing to interact with the teachers and see the passion in the content that they're teaching and their willingness to really want to connect with the students. My son being a freshman and, you know, high school is new for him, he's really excited about it, but it's a lot, you know, it's all new. He's in pretty much all honors courses and AP and all of that, so it's a bit of an adjustment. And oftentimes, I'm asking him about different things that maybe I hear about or I'm wondering about. He doesn't always know, so it was nice to have a lot of that reinforced in, at the open house with the teachers sharing. Or even just, there was a poster about student organizations in one of the classrooms. And I just took a picture of it and sent it to my son, like, hey, you were asking me about this, it's been sitting in your classroom.
Way to call him out.
But, but so, it's really exciting to see that there are things in place here, even with the restorative conversations and things of that nature. So things are moving in really a positive direction, not that I expected anything different. So that's really good to see in terms of maybe areas of growth, things that we could do better. Just how can we ensure that students know what's available to them? And how can we empower parents to be active participants in a lot of the great things that you already have established? Even in terms of the restorative conversations. It was hard to see from back there, but I know there was a parent component or a family component. How are we including parents in that piece? Or are we? Maybe it's, you know, just wanting to understand. I know I would like to be aware of my sons having restorative conversations and how I can support that as a parent, so.
I think that's a good point, I mean, following up with the family, they may not know what's going on at all.
And why?
Yeah.
So I think, you know.
You may know why already.
Or not. And so, you know, as a parent, when my son was here, I think I can echo a lot of the positives, you know, but I always look at the parents who aren't here and why aren't they here? And most likely, many of those students are the ones that are struggling in many different ways, right? And so how do we engage them? Now, my child had to be real special, so he came from Prairie Crossing. So I can't talk about the woodland experience, but I'm going to guess, right? That parents and students don't necessarily get the support they always need to transition to high school. And I think as a parent, you were either hands-off and now you're really hands-off or you're hands-off and you're struggling to be more hands, I mean, you're hands-on and you're struggling to be more hands-off. So helping parents transition. I've spent a lot of time in adult education outside of what I do now, United Way. And so we know our parents are challenged. They don't know power of school, they can't get in. You know, they might be that pesky parent who's like, did my child turn it in? Did my child turn it in? Because they can't maneuver through some of the routes that are there that are perfect and great. But then how do we expect that parent to also help their child? Did you turn it in? Yes, okay. That was going on with my other half. And I kept saying, you have to look, right? You have to check. So I always wonder, like, are we asking or how do we ask those parents who are engaging for many different reasons? What is it that they need? Because a parent is an asset, right? I also loved a lot of what you were talking about with restorative justice. But I also know that even in today, communication just as a lifestyle is even worse than it ever was, right? I will say culturally, and the other African-American parents can beat me up. But culturally, we speak in a very directive way to our children. Like, that's how we're raised, right? And then over time, we learn to communicate in different ways and in different venues. And so I can see, like, when we talk a lot about disrespect, what's the respect and what is not? Right? And even my son, who's very respectful, we'd have conversations, because he would say something happened. And whether it was or wasn't disrespectful was always interesting. it was or wasn't disrespectful was always interesting to me, like, how do you define that? And so, getting more into helping the kids understand, like, this is pre-work world, this is pre-college, like, your behavior is so important, but we assume sometimes that they know they're being disrespectful, and they don't. Some of that comes into play, it's not, it's cultural, but it's not necessarily Latino. It's cultural in the way that you're raised in your own home and cultural environment. And I think, I'll speak on the invisibility of black people while I'm talking, we have become invisible in many places, because we do have more students with other needs. More does not equate less, right? Like, we have to make sure that our students, and I will even say our non-Latino or African-American students, aren't left in the dust, because the needs are different. And so, DEI is important to that, but we have to be able to meet everybody where they're at. And then not, you know, I always used to say, like, the middle, the kids that are in the middle of the pack are also the kids that
There's my group.
oftentimes don't excel, because when you're at the sort of lower end, and you're really struggling, there's lots of resources and tools. And when you're AP, well, you're just AP, and you're there. It's the middle of the pack. It's the same way when we start thinking about the children, the students, and our parents. How do we get across all those levels and not forget the ones that are in the middle of the pack? I don't expect you to work miracles, but, you know, my four years, when my son was a student here, these were a lot of things that I thought about. And then when I work with other organizations, these are things that we talk about. Like, how do you better serve all the people that you're serving, who's become invisible, you know, for whatever reason? Invisibility is driven by lots of things, and who's in the middle of the pack. And how do we make sure we're meeting everybody, or most?
All right, I wanted on the record, she's not a plant, we've never met, correct? But this is a conversation several of us, me almost daily, have been having with, I call it the 50 percentiles, and then the 20% underneath that, and then we have our special ed, and then where are we with our 20 percenters below 50%? Because our AP, and I'm a mother, who, my child just graduated last year, and he has ultra benefited from AP, I mean, he walked into college as a sophomore, by the grace of God, in this school. And so, that all being said, I have an adopted son, who I consider in the 20 percentile. And that has been, I would say, a case study that has been challenging and difficult, and has taught, has had us having a lot of conversations about resources, and attention, and focus, and what it looks like to, at each step in that continuum, what resources are we providing? Because we can outsource a special ed student at the tune of $12,000 a month, you know, to get the special needs met by their plan. And we have AP classes that are running with these very high-end class structures. And we have our 50 percentiles who are, I don't know, they're working hard, and they're getting their jobs done. And then we have, you know, maybe these 20 percentiles who might be having these conversations some days, and like I said earlier, might be a symptom of, do they have a learning disability that's not diagnosed, or whatever? Or is it just a behavior? And to your point, with the culturally, cultural communications, you know, my husband's black, when I go to his family, it's a very different vibe than when I talk to my parents, or whatever. And so, picking up on those cues is part of the DEI work. And it's like, it's like we're like, we almost end up talking in these circles here, and amongst all of us, because it all comes, the special ed circle, the whole special ed, we just did a huge audit, that, that, we've talked about, is it a special ed audit, or is it an ed audit? Because special ed is not like that 20, 10%, 20% that gets diagnosed and offered specific IP, you know, whatever services. What about the 20% below the 50? And what are we doing? Because, God forbid, we haven't resourced that as much as, so, I mean, this poor guy has listened to me talk to him pretty much every morning on my, he's so sad I have an hour and a half on my way to work, because that's the time where I'm like, blowing up my mind about this. But I can't thank you enough for your comments, because honestly, you seem like a plant. I've never met you, right? Like, I swear, I never met her, she did that all on her own.
I'm not buying that for one second.
Yeah, I know, I know you're not, John, but it is true, you know? But no, I echo, I second everything you said, because it really, and watching my, my adopted son struggle, and finally get into a rhythm with services wrapped around him, and now he's being, I mean, I just texted an A and B screenshot of all of his grades, like, he's now getting in his stream. But what were those behaviors that were causing, was it that he couldn't focus, he couldn't, he didn't understand? And, you know, we've talked about, well, why are the parents helping making him do his homework? The parents can't do the homework with him, because they don't understand. Hell, I didn't even understand the homework.
Algebra.
Yeah, they, he couldn't understand the algebra, right? So how do you, you know, are we as a school saying, well, the parents have to get involved? You know, do they have the tools?
How do we help the parents?
Yeah, do they have the tools in the toolbox, right?
Right, you know, how do we help the parents understand? So I'm gonna go on my other little soapbox thing. I have to say, I was called when I came here, and saw like the, whatever that night is, when all the freshmen show up, and you can go to all the different clubs, and there's a gigantic sign.
Is it when they're eighth grade coming into freshman?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a giant, well, COVID, we were like, but there was a gigantic sign that says special ed. And I thought, well, who wants to go over there? And why are we labeling 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old students publicly as special ed? I, I, my son started in two special ed classes and worked his way out. Why? Because he has dysgraphia, and he doesn't, well, he didn't, he does now, didn't write. So I wrote all of his assignments through sixth grade, right? So we could tell where we were going along. But so he was in classes, because he was in special ed math, because it would take him three sheets of paper to answer one math problem. But he had never been in a special ed class. Like, it wasn't until he had resources, but he was mainstreamed in regular classes, but he had OT, blah, 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 right? And to come here, I thought that was just, it was just an interesting thing. I thought, hmm, I'm not sure, like, I want to be all in that corridor, particularly kids, I'll just, as polite as I can, who are very socially aware that they have needs, but they're not distinctly different. And so, all their friends, and blah, 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 right?
They're afraid their friends will make fun of them and treat them badly.
Right, and so you have the opposite thing with parents.
They won't go, they won't even go to the class.
Right? You won't even go to class. And then as a parent, the parents are sitting there saying, what does special ed mean? Nope, my kid doesn't need these extra resources, because now you're labeling my child, and you're putting my child in a track that's different than something or someone else. Do they understand that their kids can move in and out, or, you know, there's all these different levels to special ed? So I think, again, that, how do we engage parents, so they're understanding, and they can be another supportive tool, or umbrella for students?
Yeah, but there's certainly, there's certainly something about, for, that's different for a parent when their child is not succeeding, that it's more difficult to figure out how to, you know, school becomes a stressful place instead of a place of success and celebration. Yeah.
The other side of that question is, is how do you engage parents, which is very important? But how do you engage parents that don't want to be engaged? Because really, that's, that's probably a good chunk of people who are having problems, and they know they have a problem, but they're not getting help anywhere, right?
Right.
And the parents are frustrated, and everybody's frustrated, and the parents don't want to come talk to us either.
But I think it's understanding why they don't want to be engaged. I can tell you that, my entire school career, my father never went into a school building, never went to a parent-teacher conference, never read a report card. He was disengaged, but he had expectations. You get good grades, you graduate, you go to college. But it was because of his own, he had a third-grade education. He didn't feel comfortable in a school environment, so you were never going to catch him there, never. We have those same parents today.
We do, 100%.
Right? When you look at your parent, when you look at educational attainment in gurney, you still have a high percentage of parents who don't have a high school diploma.
They weren't successful, they're not comfortable being in the environment, they're not going to engage.
They're not going to question, they're not going to ask for help.
It brings to mind to me a question, is there a point, just to throw this out, is there a point where it's counterproductive to get their parents involved?
Well, it's like she just said earlier, she said, parents, parents are an asset, which, I really like that you said that, because you articulated it in a, in a really great way, where I'm thinking, wow, like, that's exactly what I was thinking for a long time, but just didn't know how to put it in words. But it goes back to, like, if parents are an asset, then we are, as much as we're trying to educate our students, we also have to invest in educating our parents, in educating the parents who aren't engaged, and making them feel, which goes back to being inclusive and welcoming.
And the district doesn't have to do it all, you can have help in engaging the parents or educating, depends on what it is you decide you want to focus on with educating parents. But getting parents to be comfortable asking questions, you know, you can sit there and talk to your child about why your homework isn't done, but are you asking the teacher? Or if the teacher responds, do you understand what the teacher's response was?
Yeah, so Miguel and Leslie, I wonder, both of you are on the bilingual parent, right? So can you just reflect a little bit on how did you get involved? Like, how did that come, did somebody invite you, or did you hear about it?
I am by president for BIPAC. Yo me enteré de esta reunión por medio de el grupo. Lo hice más que todo por mi hija. I'm from Colombia. La educación es muy diferente en mi país, la cual nos exige a que seamos personas educadas y profesionales, teniendo o no teniendo los recursos.
So the way that she found out fue por su organización, through BIPAC. The way that she found out about this is through the organization, BIPAC, and she's doing it because of her daughter. She's saying that she's from Colombia, and education in Colombia is different. Se enfocan más allá en Colombia en...
Even if you don't have the resources, you need to be educated.
La forma en que me involucro es porque la educación aquí es diferente, y mi hija ha tenido que pasar por un proceso de adaptación.
Education here is different, and my daughter has been going through a process as well.
Adapting to a new environment.
Primero, el idioma.
First, the language.
Segundo, la forma de educación.
Style of education in this country.
Como es en Colombia, pierdes el año si no estudias. Te exiges o no cumples tus metas.
Good to come back.
If you fail the, the school grade, you just don't pass.
Stay.
And you stay back. You're held, you're held back.
So she's also said that, so it forces you to really want to excel, and overcome your challenges, and do the best that you can.
Mi hija aquí ha demostrado que ha podido, tiene buenas calificaciones, pero su proceso fue duro. Lloró, tuvo bullying, pero mamá estuvo ahí.
My daughter has shown that she's been able to get good grades here at school, but she's also been through a process. She's been bullied, bullied through the process.
She wanted to leave, she wanted to go back to Colombia, but something that she just said that was really important to me, was that even though her daughter went through those experiences right now, and is overcoming, she was there, her mom was there, standing by her side.
Siempre estaba ahí. You can do it. Your mom is here for you. Por eso busqué un grupo para poder conocer más de la escuela, estar incluida en el sistema, y poder dar ideas de mi país, poder ayudar a este país.
Look for an organization to be more involved here in school, and, and just give ideas as well, from her country.
Porque en mi hija veo un futuro, y quiero que también, si ella puede ayudar a contribuir a la escuela, pues yo también lo haré de esta forma, estar en el BIPAC.
Then in my daughter, I see future in her, and if she can also contribute, contribuir, que le va a dar el apoyo, that she's gonna give her the...
Her full support.
Support.
And she also said that if her daughter is willing to do it, and can do it, she's gonna do it with her, too.
Leslie, are there things that we can be doing better to help make sure that you as an adult are able to build relationships here with the adults that are working here? Some of that seemed like, like, how do we make it so that you are more comfortable, or people that you know, like generally as a parent, how do we become more approachable?
¿Qué puede hacer la escuela como para usted, para los padres, para que usted se sienta más en confianza en, en poder venir aquí a la escuela, no, y este, y hacer preguntas? ¿Qué es lo que la escuela puede hacer?
Para los padres que somos de lengua española, esa es nuestra pared.
For the parents that speak Spanish, that's our barrier.
No saben cómo comunicarse.
They don't know how to communicate?
I try.
You're fine.
Yeah.
Doing great.
Pero eso es lo que está colocando esa pared de nosotros, poder estar en la escuela, venir y preguntar, porque los maestros hablan inglés.
That's like our barrier for the parents, because teachers just only speak English.
¿Cómo traduce? ¿Cómo entiende la persona?
How can they translate? How can the...
Mi idea es que haya alguien que ayude al maestro, a traducirle al padre en alguna reunión, en que pueda explicar cómo va el alumno, el estudiante, qué progresos ha tenido, o qué dificultades tiene. Soy una mamá que me gusta preguntar cómo vas, cómo va la tarea, y si recibo una anotación en mi email que no asististe a clase, ¿por qué?
It's, we're in for the teacher to have a translator when they're having a meeting with the parents, so they can be explaining everything, you know, that the teacher is saying. And mom would like to know, like, whenever she gets notifications as well from school, why, for example, why her student was absent.
But the issue right there, too, is that she's only one person for two campuses. So that's something that down the line, we would have to look at.
And about 1,500 Hispanic students.
Right, just regular communication.
Like, you can't divide Priscilla into like 20 pieces.
Well, how many, how many meetings like this are had in a day or a week, and are you overwhelmed, and are there, are those that are had that you can't attend? Do we need more of you?
Two, another person would be good, yes, for each campus, yeah, definitely.
You'd be a full of the same old at those points.
I am, I am going back and forth.
That's called a silver platter.
Yeah. I am going back and forth from campuses. I do have meetings, there's a time throughout the year that I am pretty busy with meetings. I mean, I try to schedule all my meetings, you know, so they don't interact with each other, but, yeah, there is times where they do interact with each other, so I have to just let them know that I am not able to do it, so then they change the date, and so on, because they still need me, so, yeah, they just change the date for me.
I would also throw in here my perspective, I'm just making connection to something that Gail said earlier, is, there's some level of help, helping parents be better at asking for help, and most of...
That's exactly what Leslie's doing right now.
Yeah, most of what Priscilla's able to do is, we're coming to her as staff. Yeah, most of what Priscilla is able to do is, uh, we're coming to her as staff and asking her to help, and I'm, Priscilla really doesn't have an opportunity to reach out to families and say, hey, I'm a resource for you, here's how you advocate for yourself, here's how you, you access the resource that I make, so she's...
She's not accessible.
She's, it's hard for her to be accessible because she's so busy.
But then we need to make her, or an area accessible.
First, we need, we, we need the ability to have the access.
Yes.
Because if we don't have the access, she's gonna get inundated and overwhelmed, and people will be frustrated, so I think first we need to provide the, the resource, and then make sure the resource is well...
But even the resources we have, isn't it made clear to Hispanic students when they come in, if this is available?
It looked like Miguel had something to add.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I've received help here in the school in my language. Uh, I speak a little English, uh, I speak a little English, but, um, you know, it's more easy for me to speak Spanish.
Yeah, it's okay.
And also, she's a friend of mine, Ms. Vasquez, is the first person I talked to in the school, because my son is starting last year, the friends, right? So, she speaks Spanish, so I talked to her, she helped me to registration to my son. I mean, she do like, like the mother, this is very important, because really, I don't know for, for not, no. Okay, so, I'll talk Spanish, okay? So, I got involved because, uh, I needed to be involved with my son, because my mom is not in Mexico, not in the United States, she's in Mexico. So I wanted to support my son, and my son could see, that I'm also involved in the school.
Dad wanted to get involved because, um, his wife is in Mexico, he's, uh, by himself here with his son, so he wanted to show his son that he's, uh, interested and wants to be involved and to, um, help him out.
Uh, además, I've seen, uh, I've grown, many students need someone to support them in their language, especially those that are coming, uh, they don't know how to communicate. At least, uh, I feel like I'm inside the school, and I can ask for them, any, any questions?
There's a lot of students that are coming in from different countries, um, Spanish-speaking countries, that need the help as well here in school. And dad feels comfortable enough here in school already that he can advocate for them as well.
Great strike.
What made, what made you feel comfortable, what makes you feel comfortable to advocate for your son?
So you say that you feel comfortable, uh, this, asking questions, because there are many students that come here from other countries, no, that don't speak English? And you feel comfortable enough to ask for them?
Uh, to ask, in a way that, uh, uh, what can they do, for example, my son, who, who says that, how can they help, that he comes in late, to a class, to another, I've talked to Mr. Vargas, Mr. Vargas helps me, supports me, we investigate, no? That's a way, uh, other students, who also, like, they know, like, from my son, that I'm the president of BIPAC, so they come, and, and, why don't you help me with my food, to see if you can, when you help me, and then came the change of the alimentation.
How do you apply for free food?
So he goes, and...
So he's saying through, uh, it's, it's been through his son, he's, um, his son has helped, um, Angel has helped, uh, other students. For example, like, whenever they're, uh, late many times to class, uh, Mr. Vargas, our counselor here at Allman, has helped dad with that.
Hello, Mr. Vargas.
Has helped dad with that, um, other, other things are, for example, um, since the, uh, his, uh, son's friends know that he's the president of, how does it say?
BIPAC.
BIPAC, BIPAC, um, that they're asking him, how can they apply for like the fee waiver, to get free lunch here, um, things like that.
He's become like the ambassador now.
They know that he knows, and he has access to you, so that gives him access to information.
So you have become the go-to.
He's the go-to.
Let me point out that he also has access to Mr. Vargas and Mrs. Vargas, which were the positions we reinstated with the, um, referendum.
Apart from the workshops that we're, that are organized, they're helping a lot, also for us, who are from the executive BIPAC, they help us, because they open our minds, of how we can help Hispanics.
The workshops that, um, are being offered, um, by BIPAC are also very helpful.
Yeah, he said that, um, adding to that, he, he had added that the workshops and the conferences that they've, they've attended, um, have, have given them the bridge to, hold on, say it again, I just had it right in the tip of my tongue.
Just basic English being a little bit different, so I don't know, it's something to really think about, but.
You know, our taxi, where is it? How do I get it? How do I get to, when do they have theater? I'm like, you gotta click on the calendar, do the dropdown, and I'm just like, oh my god, a newcomer family, I can't even imagine.
Having a language barrier.
Yeah, the language and navigating that, but there's so much there for parents, so I don't know how much.
Accessing it is a whole other.
Yeah, so I think.
Did you want to add something?
No, so I know with the Canvas piece and navigating the websites and things like that, and I know this is something that we do at our job, because we have so many different resources that people access, and people are always, well, how do you do it? How do you go on there? How do you click that? How do you get to from point A to point B? So what we did was, we uploaded presentations to put on our main page for people to be able to navigate, and they have it in different languages, so they'll have someone come in there and see if it's the Canvas page. They'll show, okay, this is how you look at this, this is how you click this, this is how you get to there, a tutorial of sorts. And so you can click on it on the Warren Township page. And then you can have someone come in there in a different language, and they do the same thing, so that they have that same opportunity to click into English, in Spanish, in whatever other language you want to put it in. So it's kind of helpful for, that dials back some of the questions on how to navigate it, from parents that might not want to ask the question to teachers or someone else, they can like, oh, it's on that website. If they know that it's there, and we can get them to go there, they can see that, and then they can have this recording that they can listen to at their own leisure and be able to do that. So I don't know how, how that could be implemented, and that could be super helpful.
Like a simple tutorial to Power School login.
That would have been helpful.
For all of us.
Yeah.
And that would be good for even like, if it's a student that's really good at navigating Canvas. That's something that, that they can put, that's like in their, in their wheelhouse, that hey, I did this presentation on, on Can-, on Power, on the Warren Township website, on how to navigate Canvas. And I've done, another somebody can, I did this in this language on Canvas, so people can see how to do it. So that gives a stu-, a student an opportunity to step outside their comfort zone and do something as well. Yeah, that's, yeah, and it's helpful.
Library pages, you'll see a lot that really.
It's like going to Google almost, you know, and you're like, how do you do this again? And you're looking, and they're doing their little videos, and you're, or YouTube, and you're looking, and they got all these videos, and you're like, oh, okay, that's how you do it. So it's kind of helpful. So having something like that maybe on the website would be a good tool.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, one thing we all, everybody at this table has in common is that we, we are invested and will show up and feel comfortable in a setting like this. But of course, we have lots of kids who are coming from households where they have supportive adults who wouldn't feel comfortable being in the building or making phone calls, or maybe don't have a supportive adult who has time to do that. So how do we bridge that? How do we, as a school system, be, have an open door that works for people who are in a situation like that?
Um, so that one class, his other classes have it, but there's like one class where I look at Power School, you know, but I don't have a class that we sit down and look at. But if I was a parent that didn't know how to do it, I mean, now it's already overwhelming, like where do I get to what the assignments are? What's the weekly schedule? Like, it's different in every single Canvas page, so.
But it's different with every teacher, too.
That's what I mean. Every single class, it looks completely different. So if there was like a uniform, so if you did that video, it was like, this is what you'll see when you open it. There's a daily, or a weekly, or whatever, and, you know, like to make it more accessible, because if, you know, I think about the other moms that are like trying to get in there, and they're like, oh my god.
Yeah, and I remember when my son was in.
Hurtin' teachers, it's like hurtin' cats.
Yeah, well, and when my son was in.
They don't want to do it the same, trust me.
In grade school, the teacher could pick their platform. So that was like, I wanted to cry, I'm like, I give up, like, I give up. And I'm not the biggest idiot in the world, trying to get on technology, right? But even, it's almost exactly the same, though, because each thing being different just really wrecks everyone's world.
So, and Gail, you said, you pointed out, what we have all experienced, every teacher is different, right? Every teacher has different expectations, a way of connecting with students and families. So I wonder if maybe it's somewhere beyond the classroom is the connection point. Right, so we're talking over here about kind of technology solutions, which are great, I love it. The idea of tutorial, especially if a student made it, because I'd rather watch it if a student made it. But, but how do we make a human connection, maybe that even is accessible from home, right? So telephone, or virtual meetings, or something? With somebody beyond the classroom, maybe who could be consistent, right? Because if it's with a single teacher, that helps for one, one class, but it doesn't help beyond that class.
Are you familiar with parent mentors? They're usually K through five. But if you think about that, like, why can't we have parent ambassadors?
I think we have one.
Right, we have one, right, but why can't we replicate our one parent ambassador, where there's people who look and sound like those parents, who then they may feel more comfortable approaching and talking to.
Point guard.
A point guard, a bunch of them, but point guards, right? Who can then, even if Canvas is inconsistent, can help people with tips and tricks. Or there's, you know, I go back to libraries again, you have, you can call and speak to the librarian, or maybe you call and talk to the ambassador, or maybe you have coffee and cookies and come in and ask your questions. But it's, it's bringing, it's either bringing them into school or taking school home to them. But sometimes you need stepping stones, and that ambassador, or another parent, or someone who.
You know, you're, you're stepping in another direction that has been a conversation amongst us also is, so you have somebody that's kind of, you know, kind of stepped into a role of being that point guard, or the ambassador, the... But for you guys as parents, like, how have you felt about being able to know who to call when you have a question, or your student needs to navigate something, or you need to figure out? Like, how have you guys navigated finding out how to?
Celebrated when I left this school. Because I was notorious for my emails, right? Because I would just write emails, and I would just.
Good for you.
Oh yeah, I was the email queen for, for.
I gotta kick into this for a second, because it's a little ironic, because you're talking about the leader in the state of Illinois for something called 2-1-1. For United Way, I know her from that. And so I'm thinking a 2-1-1 for the school, an ombudsman, a number you could call who would direct you to the right place. Yeah, that's an old term.
No, it's one we use every day.
But a 2-1-1 for Illinois that would, that would correct you, connect you to.
So, I think what I'll try to do here is, I'm gonna take the second part from Susan, which is to try to connect some dots here, and I'll do the best I can. So there's six board members here, we don't work for the school district, we're elected community members who are overseeing the school district. And I think, just so the parents know, you have six of the seven of us here that have a very empathetic heart, are willing to help solve some of these issues, hence the reason why we're doing this today. So, we're, and then the fact that we passed that referendum, so as I've mentioned in previous meetings, we're really only limited by our imaginations at this point. We have the resources, we have leadership that cares, we have a community oversight that cares. Now it's time to actually do something. And it may require doing something drastically different. Some of us have been on this board for a few years, and we've gotten the yearly reports, and we've seen some data, and we nod, and we're gonna maybe throw one position here, or we're gonna throw a few more dollars here, but a lot of that seems like it's in isolation, instead of, again, trying to connect some dots here. So, we are hearing about the language barrier, we're hearing about resource barriers, connections to families. We've talked a little bit, again, in isolation, about the parent representatives. Reminds me of an old, like, to the Neighborhood Newcomers Club, that would just welcome somebody. Let's bring that back and rebrand it. But there are some communities that have officially designated parent resource coordinators, and have given a small paid stipend with the understanding that other parents, because they have had kids that go through the system. There's someone out there doing the stuff that we could probably learn from. I hear about the translation stuff, immediately what came to mind was Maine Township High School, which has an enormous amount of languages being spoken, and have, I thought, done a pretty good job at solving some of these issues. Might be something for our administration to check into, particularly Maine West and Maine East, that have well over thirty language, languages being spoken, so curriculum nights and open houses. They're doing some pretty innovative stuff, I haven't checked in the last few years, but good people to look at. So, in thinking about this, we, I think the question of, like, what does the board want to see for all kids? I think we know that answer, otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation. But as far as what do we want to do to change the experience for our students and families? That's where this kind of comes together. Because I, I think for a while, what we've been doing, I mean, we love our school, we love our teachers, we love our administrators, everybody that's here. But I think we also recognize that we can do things a little different and a little better. So how do we do that in some kind of holistic way? So, we have attendance issues, sure, we can assign an attendance specialist and do that, and we can attend to that one problem. If it's just translation, sure, we can throw, and I started to hear little grumblings of this, like, we can just throw more bodies at translation services, maybe that solves one part of the problem. If it's just welcoming families and go, that's one part of the problem. But how do we take a system, and I am gonna call out the fact that we also, I think to complicate this, something I know I've identified and others have kind of mentioned as we, but it didn't come up here tonight, so maybe it's not a barrier as much as I think, but the two-campus system, where we send kids for freshmen and sophomore, and then there's a, then they come over here for junior and senior. So some of those relationships don't continue, they do disappear. And you wonder what gets lost in that, so I'm gonna throw that into the mix. So how do we take the student and have our system adjust to where all these things are being wrapped around the student? And that might mean kind of blowing up the, the system, the structure that we have now, but those supports that we have in place, the deans, the counselors, the attendance specialists, the, you know, remind me, we, we. Well, and even, there's even a hole there, too, like, we, we do, or, I'm embarrassed to know this, not know this, but Danny, we do or don't have some version of advisory class right now. We do not. Yeah, so an advisory class in many high schools or middle schools is that check-in point where the adult, so we have an absence of that. We have a two-campus model, we have, so how do we get our systems, our structures, our staff to follow that said child from welcome to here, to graduation from here? And I think that is probably the question. And then that group of adults can help to solve some of those translations, those, you know, some, a lot of those issues. If kids are starting to slip in grades, we have a supportive team that looks and is attending to those and keeping an eye on those. So I always worry about big school systems, and our kids are coming from neighborhood schools, right? So Milburn and Gurney fifty-six, and Woodland's a little large, but, yeah. But the, and then we're talking about, in the same conversation, getting parents here. I don't know the exact square mile area, but it's massive. And I don't know if that's realistic. So it's, I think there's a piece there of reaching out, making it feel smaller, both in our reach out to parents, as well as our structures, you know, around the kids. So I guess we've heard a lot from the parents, so actually, I'm gonna ask the six school board members that are here, because you may have thoughts on this. What do you want to see, in having let in with all that, what do you want to see different? What do you want to see change? Because you may have been sitting back at some of these meetings and just kind of having something in, in mind, but didn't want to vocalize it, or hearing tonight from our parents. Maybe something's connecting dots for you, or is the answer no? I think where we're at right now, what we're doing right now is, we'll continue on. So that would be my question to, to our board members here.
So I don't know if this is realistic, because of the two campuses, but to me, having my experience of having my two girls go through high school, myself working at a high school, counselors to me are the go-to. So someone said, who, you know, who do you go to?
Who's that go-to?
To me, the go-to's the counselor. Secondly, picking to the, to the counselors, to me, I, I feel that our counselor should be, so like, if you're in charge of A through D, you should be in charge of A through D all four years, whether it's opalein or almond. But how do we achieve that, and is that realistic to our district? But that's consistency that we can have.
There's also another piece for the parents that we've talked about, and again, talking about, I'm not sure if this is realistic or not, but in schools, we're notorious for doing it by alpha slice, by last name, and that doesn't, I know it's efficient, doesn't always seem to be the best connector for kids. So we've talked about that, not sure if that plays a part in this or not. And when we had open house, and I heard the special services staff with their projection up, I saw the alpha slice plain as day up there. And I, once again, thought to myself, gosh, there's gotta be a better way. And maybe it's a little harder with the size that we are, but not insurmountable, though, either. I don't have a solution for that, but it just, it, I, when I see that up there.
Just need to identify what the, I mean, I'll second what Natalia was saying. Because in my experience with my adoptive son, he lost his counselor between freshman and sophomore year. And we talk about kids that have come to the school from the other districts, he came from Waukegan. So he didn't know anybody, but that counselor seemed to be the one person he was talking about when he went to school. They connected through fishing, they connected through, like, I mean, he looked for him in the hallways, right? And then, for whatever reason, sophomore year, and he was struggling, his sophomore year, he had a different counselor. And that was, he was devastated, and I was devastated for him, because that was the, actually, he didn't talk about any friends at high school. He talked about that counselor. And I was so sad to hear that, I, I don't even know what the, the change was. But to Natalia's point, like, you know, when there's a trusted adult in the school, and these kids are connecting, I think it's hard, if you're gonna transition even between the two schools, but definitely between freshman and sophomore year, you lose it. And, and he lost that contract, contact, now the parents are retooling like it was freshman year again. Okay, wait, who do I, whose email do I need to plug into my system? Like, what are, what are we gonna, like, it's like resetting the button. Now you're gonna reset it, because they gotta go to Almond, so I've reset three times.
And that's not consistency.
I come from a healthcare model, and we, we talk about care planning, and we have an interdisciplinary team. And that interdisciplinary team is your team. You may have, you have a, one therapist, usually a consistent nurse, you have usually a consistent physical therapist, and they all come together to talk about your progress, your goals, identify your, you know, root, cause of your problems. Social worker is usually that, maybe it's the counselor that, you know, because I get confused here with the social worker, the counselor, and the psychologist, but it's a little bit different. But the, it sounds like the counselor would be a point guard that would be, okay, you need to talk to this person, you need to talk to that person, and you spoke it out to triage what this parent or student needs in his, in his care plan team, and that's how my mind works.
So let me, oh, go ahead.
So, I think that what I've gotten out of this, which is a lot of good stuff from everybody, so, and I appreciate all of you very, very much, because you have, you know, give us great information.
Take guts to come in here.
And, and, yeah, because we're scary. But, well, people think we're scary. But I think there's, we're talking about two different things here, is what I get out of this. And the thing that, that we're talking about right this minute is how we help the student while they're here, right? As the counselors, this person, whoever they talk to. But then when you listen to our friends, our new friends, what they're saying is, we don't know even how to start. So, and the experience is different across ethnicities and nationalities, and I'm sure it's different from Colombia, from Venezuela, from Mexico, whatever the issues are. And I think the real challenge we have is how do we, how do we reach out to everyone in a way that's comfortable for them? I don't think it's possible, by the way, but we can do better, we can do much better. And I think, to me, that's the very first thing we need to do. We need to get the peo-, we need to get engaged with the adults.
And I think if we can do it at the beginning, and then that relationship can carry through, because then like you're talking about, even if I don't come to the building, if I make a phone call, I know who I'm talking to, or if I send an email, I know who I'm emailing. And then it, and then that person can give me a warm handoff to whoever can actually help me solve whatever I need to solve.
Let me back.
Radically different situation.
They, they are and they aren't, they are. But they all surround, to kind of back this up and apply a name to it, is just relationships. So, a lot of times in schools, you hear relevance, rigor, and relationships. And that relationships comment is important for kids, it's important for parents of kids. So I think there's a piece there, if the counselor, whoever that point person is that watches over, who's tasked to watch over that child for their time that they're with us, that's important, that relationship matters. And when there's a transition, I would argue that transition matters, too, and I'm not sure what that looks like behind the scenes. Your point, the relationship when they first come to us, or ahead of the fall, how do we welcome them in with a relationship? Not in mass or in an auditorium, but possibly a smaller unit, the parent ambassador, meeting the counselor early, the... I don't know who that is that we identify, and that might be bodies that we need to.
Isn't that part of why we have the welcoming center, too? Like, wouldn't that?
It can be an offshoot of the welcome center. Yeah, I, who, how do they know about the welcome center, so let's back it up, right? So let's take it even back, so a part, here's the good news. The vast majority of our kids, we know where they're coming from, Milburn, Woodland, Gurney fifty-six, like, the vast majority. Not all, but the vast majority. Maybe there's a piece there about the transition from eighth grade to high school that can improve, and that will not solve everybody, but it will solve at least the knowns, the known families, that we could probably do a better job of welcoming. So I think relationships, 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 coming in, where do they go? Who do they attach to? Who can help guide them places? And I, I know I've said this before, so I apologize, but one of my kids is at ISU, and they have a department of families and parents, or whatever they deem it. And one of the things they told us, well, no, it's actually called, like, Parent and Family Services, I think. And what they say is, you don't know where to go, you don't know where to turn, you don't know what department, you're not getting an answer, you call us. And.
Bingo. Okay, I've been uncharacteristically quiet here.
Okay, stop, stop it right now.
Wouldn't want to ruin your streak, Steve.
It's really ironic that Gail's here, because I'm screaming deja vu here. And some of you know I was on the Lake County Board, and I was chair of Health and Community Services Committee, and battered, okay. And I try not to mention it, but I do, whatever. But, and battered women and children, and homeless, and recidivism, and you know, all of these tremendous horrible needs came in that were overwhelming, and, and nobody knew who to call. Two-one-one, and for, and, and, you know, in committee, I would say, we don't know what the problem is, it got so I could go like that. And after a while, it got through to the county board, and they pass it, and it's going statewide. You don't have to call it two-one-one, call it.
Call it two-one.
Call it any, call it anything you want.
One-two-one, one-two-one.
That's too obvious, forget it.
But, but, but you need to have, and, 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 first of all, I want to, I agree wholeheartedly that, that relationships need to go, you know, by the campuses, that, that goes without saying. But you need to have a resource, and call it the, the, the Answers Office. And this is, the, the first thing the kid learns when he gets in is, here's the Answers Office. Now eventually, sure, they're gonna know that they called the counselor, but they're told to call the counselor first. And if there's something the counselor can't handle, or whatever, I can't, I missed my bus, well, here, here's who you talk to over here. You need, you need to have a central depository that everybody knows about, that is a direct connection to all the resources that are available. Number one, that's a connection, number two, it gives you over time, information as to where resources are needed, because you can track the calls.
And the only thing I'll say to that is, if, if we say to every incoming freshman, for instance, and this is the, what I understand, the school saying, because in my mind, it's a social worker. But if we say to every incoming freshman, and I know the counselors in the room are gonna throw up when I say this, you got a question, call your counselor, right? Whatever that looks like, if you're, if you've got three hundred to one, or thirty to one, or whatever ratio we're talking about that's manageable, when we say this, right? Call the counselor, and the counselor is the one, is your two-one-one. You know, then your counselor is building that relationship with the parents from the start, and that kid and that parent begin that relationship of trust where, I'm not, I'm agreeing with what you're saying.
That's just fine, but that's step two.
No, 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 no.
I'm talking, I'm talking kids formula here, I'm talking all the parents, I'm talking the whole community. Everybody that goes to the high school knows, call this number, that's where you start. Very simple, and that person's gonna refer you to the counselor, and then you know to call the counselor. But I'm talking, there are some things the counselor won't be able to handle, I'm talking very, very simply.
Yeah, but they can guide them, they might know, but they'll be able to guide them.
Comes the trusted resource.
I'm not knocking the counselor at all, I'm talking about something that works.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, your counselor is your personal two-one-one. Like, your counselor is that relationship that from day one, you are, you are told that, you know, Mr. Joe.
It's not a substitute, it's a subset.
No, no, Mr. Joe is your resource, Mr. Joe is the one you need to call, Mr. Joe will refer you. And I'm not talking about if you need, you know, to put more money in the whatever, maybe. But at the same point, there's a lot of us parents that have had this experience. I'm looking at one of them, I'm one of them, where I'm like, crap, counselor, social worker, dean, I don't know what these titles mean.
Depository, tell them about the switchboard.
We all understand the concept.
We understand how it works.
The central depository, it tells you, it tells you where the need is, it tells you.
Yeah, Steve, I think the disagreement we're having is that.
Forty percent of the calls are for this.
That's like, that would be like calling an operator. And what we're talking about is, we want people to be calling a person that they know.
The operator refers you to that person.
Right.
But I'm gonna say this, in defense of being two-one-one.
Thank you.
I worry about capacity, so I wouldn't want the counselors to be overburdened with just a, you know, where's the bathroom? Versus some of these larger things. So some of it is, going back to what Tony was talking about, and starting in eighth grade, getting ready to come into high school, you know, it's the roadmap.
Knocking off the small stuff.
You talk to the counselor about this, you know, the Q and As, right? Like, you miss the bus, you call this. Because for as long as my kid was always missing the bus, okay, maybe we need to put you in a different corner. Now who do I talk to to move you to another corner so you don't miss that? Those are some simple things, and everything takes time. Three years from now, we might be talking about a one-two-one for the high school. But today, you only have a certain amount of pennies to parse around, right? And so some of it is just that simple education before they even get here.
A welcome jacket.
When our kids are in elementary school, they don't have a counselor, so what is a counselor?
The school secretary.
Right, right.
And if you're gonna be that dependent on the counselor, you better go four years.
So at the, when you did your welcome, start of school, whatever thing, and like a, like a sort of parting piece of advice that you gave parents was, tell your students that they have a question, ask any adult. And I thought, that sounds amazing, do all the adults know that you, that you made that promise? And, so, so like, one thought I had after that was, it doesn't have to be, maybe it doesn't have to be a person in a specific role, but that every family has a specific person. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does to me.
I don't know if that's, if that's doable, but I want every family to know one person well enough. If I call that person, they know who I am, I know who they are, I can talk to them, and they will help me figure out what to do.
So that could be, just to kind of circle this back a little bit, even if it was somebody else that took some of those questions, let's say, I, and I, it would still, I would argue, that information needs to go back to the counselor. For making the counselor that one point, that knowledgeable point, that also is trained, not just in the coursework path, but also, I believe, high school counselors are trained in a little bit of what maybe social workers might do, just slightly. So, there's a piece of both academic and social emotional stuff in one person that could be tasked. You would have to look at ratios, you would have to make sure their caseload's not overloaded, particularly if you're adding to it. But, at some point, we need to task somebody consistent to monitor that. Because this other stuff, translation services, if they pick up on, and if they're meeting with a child and say, hey, my mom hasn't gotten, you know, well, maybe I can help with that, or if there's an attendance issue and they're monitoring some of that, or if there's another issue, I just, there.
Or if a parent is calling, how do I get free lunches?
Sure.
That's a piece of information that a counselor really would, if I were a counselor, I would value, because it gives me insight into what might be going on. There might be a situational change, there might even be a housing change, there's an income change, someone lost, like, they would, so my, my best friend's been a social worker. My favorite position in life is social services, and I respect it to no end. But they are a clearinghouse of knowledge. And, in the medical world, you have to know P T, O T, speech pathology, diet, dietetics, um, medical, all of that, to be able to put it all together and package it in a way that helps that person. And, all of the calls, and I'm not talking about like, how do I add milk money to the thing? When I say calls, I'm talking about like, hey, our family needs to understand how to do a process here. We need to understand, and if you refer me to so-and-so-and-so, so that's great, but there's a mental note in there somewhere that that's going on. And that's, that's a part of that family. And when you follow a family, like, like what's been suggested for four years, that picture grows and grows and grows. And you don't have to relearn everyone every year, or every two years, that picture goes with you.
So I'm gonna, um, just add one more small point, there were a couple of schools that I spoke with that had something in place where they did follow, and there were, uh, positions that were kind of called out in that process. One was the counselor, another was a social worker, and another was an assistant principal. And between those three positions, you're attending to the S E L academic and possibly behavioral needs of, and you're painting a, a little more complete picture. Um, so I'm just gonna throw that piece in there, but what I'm, just to kind of back up, cause the six of us, we're not educators, we're not the ones that are employed by here, but we, we are community members who hear some of the same feedback that was being described today. And, it sounds as if there's a disconnect communication-wise, and how to get help, how to get information. Maybe, and, and there's a piece we're not talking about here, which is, people wanna be able to help themselves, they just don't know how to help themselves. So it's not always that there's this component of like, they need assistance, no. There are many people that are very capable, they just don't know where to turn. So, there, and this also, to connect another dot, I know we've been living, and we do have some support right now as a communications director, but we've been living without a, all this is about communications, for years, we lived without a communications director. So, I don't think that, I think that also is a piece to this too, is, is not just in who posts on social media, or who updates the website, but those are people that specialize in the art of communication. And, in some schools, translation services fall under the communications directors, so some places, it's the E L department. But, I think there's some disconnects here, in positions, because we haven't had the money. Again, that's not our issue now, our imagination is our issue now. So, from the six board members, I hear connections, relationships, entry points, expansion of welcome center, how do you get help?
Continuity.
Continuity between campuses, and it seems like there's a desire from the six of us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this very, very different meeting tonight to do something different. What that is to determine, I'm not sure we can appropriately answer that, and it might even, you get, it might get a different answer, depending on which of the six of us you ask here tonight, or seven in total. But, but I think it's time to stop, just to kind of sum this up unless we have further feedback. But, time to stop treating these as individual isolated issues, and find a holistic. The student and family are the nucleus, all the, our structure and supports surround that kid, and we need to figure out some kind of bigger answer to this issue and try something different.
Can I add one of your bullet points?
Please do.
Going back to what Gail, um, unsolicently brought up.
Sure.
Without my knowledge, earlier about the students that would not possibly be on the radars. And might be sinking, I don't wanna say falling through cracks, but needing more attention than, uh, putting that into place, and having those counselors being that eyes, ears.
Yep.
You know, feeling, watching for, you know, four years instead of two, not retooling, wrapping that into that discussion, that would be an important piece, because it goes to our what? Freshmen on track.
Yep.
And minorities that are falling into the freshman on track disproportionately.
Yep.
To all the students that we have.
Well, and I, I will second that, today I did some digging into the Illinois Report Card online, and did some, used their advanced comparative tool, and compared us to Mundaline, and the Grayslakes, and, and a couple others. And it's not always a pretty picture, which you see both in comparison to state, particularly freshman on track, which is, according to ISB, the, a very good indicator. So, I, I don't know where there's a disconnect, but I, I think, yes, you're right. I, we can throw F T Es, bodies at these issues, but it's gotta be done in some kind of, we're doing it too much in a nice. Yeah, we need to, it's time for, to borrow a term from, you know, maybe the tech sector, disrupt. Like, we need to disrupt the structure slightly, and I don't, it's, again, I don't wanna, I, when I say stuff and I say things like this, I always feel like somebody's gonna get the wrong message, cause we do have some great teachers, great administrators, great faculty and staff. I don't wanna, but, we also, i- it have some data that's showing that not everything is okay. And for some of us that's been on the board now, six years or longer, like, it, it's been consistently showing, and it, and, and we're, so something has to change. So I guess that really becomes the task, I think, Dr. Weesman, of you and your administrative team, is hopefully hearing pretty clearly from the board members, yeah, you absolutely can. And from the parents, like, maybe coming up with some ideas, brainstorming, and not just some smaller ones. But, you know, let's disrupt a little, um, Lisa.
Yeah, I thought that was very well said.
Oh, thank you.
Kind of like branding the other, what we're talking about of some of the challenges where the system, like, angry throwing people at stuff is kind of the easy solution, to hope for a fix. But when I think about the kids that have come from a low-income family, that have disabilities, that have minority families, that might have challenges, when every single class is completely different. So, I mentioned this with my daughter at open house, but I've definitely talked about this for three years with my son. The grading changes between teachers and teachers is a nightmare for a parent and a kid. Cause it's like, oh, go finish that homework, well, no point, I can't hand that one in, oh, but that teacher you can, and that teacher you can. That one gave you half credit, this one let you keep all the credit, like, it is an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, for sure.
Systematically, that is super hard for a parent that knows school. I can't even imagine for parents that, you know, school's just not something they feel safe entering into for whatever reason. Um, I would also talk about, which I know you guys have definitely addressed, working with, um, the special education audit, but the case manager model. Um, my son does have special needs, and that is, um, getting better, because I'm learning how to navigate it, for sure. But when you talk about following a kid, I know that isn't always a case manager model, that a lot of times they'll change, but the teacher has them in class, so there's a relationship. When you talked about everything needs to turn around a relationship, I think that's a really big piece. And the transition piece is just really hard for kids from teacher to teacher with different grading expectations for their grades. And there's so much stress on kids about their grades. Um, and I'll throw out too, the new P E policy is honestly why I came tonight. I just wanted to listen to see if it came up. I haven't even talked to admin about it, so I feel really bad even bringing it up, I've talked to the teachers. But, that is a huge equity, huge equity issue, and I will call admin, but I just, that's another thing of where it's like all different.
So, what I hear, it, thank you for all those pieces. Um, what I'm hearing from you is the parent experience. So attending to the parent experience, and. Yeah, well, we're, so our consumers are the students and the parents, and many times, you know, we focus on the students, but the, and, and sometimes, I'm not saying this is here, but sometimes in education, you're in education, sometimes the system, it gets complacent. No competition, right? Taxes come in, your kids are coming here, there's no incentive to have radical disruptive change, right? Cause your kids are still gonna come here, unless you have the means to go to a charter, which I would argue is still tough, cause not all charters offer busing, and there's other barriers that I have heard of. Um, but there, so, or private, or that kind of thing. So, attending to that parent experience, so they're, they know where to go, there's some standards, like, one you called out, like, just using Canvas, let's say. That could be something the administration looks at and says, look, we're, let's all agree to have a better parent experience, that whether you heavily use Canvas or not, let's all agree that at least homework goes on Canvas. So that way, a kid's not going, for this teacher, homework's over here, over here it's in the syllabus, and over here it's there. If we all just low kind of bar, all use it, homework only for those that really don't use it. At least for the parent experience, they know where to go to assist their child, and those conversations can happen internally. Um, it's so hard in education, cause there's like a tool for everything, and they all have cutesy little names, and fuzzy little warm whatevers, and there's like ten of them, you go to the, you go to, well, some, but you go to corporate, and they brand it all, and put it all in one place, and they, you know, and it's just, I, I know we many times in education get the education grade of, of it, but, so that means we just have to work harder. At making, if the, if the products aren't gonna all connect and have the same name and whatever, then we need to make the connections for our parents to, here's where you go to pay fees, this is for grades, this is for whatever, and some kind of way that's understandable. Your, your points were well taken, and thank you. I think there, the P E thing has come up in other conversations, but I would encourage you to talk to the, cause I think there's a. That's where they told us during open house to go to first, that was one of their slides. So, uh, right, but definitely talk to whoever you need to, yeah. Uh, is there, from the, first from the parents from tonight, just to kind of get this part of the conversation, is there anything missing from the discussion, anything you disagree with, anything you wanna draw more attention to, just right before we start to have Dr. Weesman wrap this up, from parents? Okay, from this, no?
Ah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, because the most important is for that. Open the door to the school, not just to open the students, but also to the parents. Because we must be in the team. How can we help the, the children if we don't know what's going on? No, I, for example, it's the first time I've seen this. Mr. Vargas, that was the one who helped me, that didn't know that he existed. But, but for the investigation, I was able to do that. Ah, it was when I met Mr. Vargas, that he helped the students. It's, it's something, it's a privilege that the students, the students, here in the United States.
Can someone do a quick translation?
Good to, uh, not only open the doors for the students, but also for the parents, um, um, so they could have more knowledge. Like, for Mr. Vargas, he was saying that he did a little bit of searching to see, to just find out who the counselor was. And, not knowing that he spoke Spanish, it just made it better.
Yeah, he knew where to turn. That's, again, a recurring theme from tonight, you're the two-one-one.
Yeah.
The, uh, from the six board members here tonight, is there anything else that you would like to highlight? You want the administration to kind of be tasked with, something we missed, something you've been thinking as you've been hearing these conversations? Not that we won't continue to talk about this, but speak.
Well, I always have something to say.
Yeah, please do.
I, I, it just, you know, it's what we're talking about today, is like, the alpha slice. Well, if we have Spanish-speaking counselors, then why aren't our Spanish-speaking students assigned to Spanish-speaking counselors?
Well, I think that's what we're doing now.
Yeah, we are doing that now with that specific group of students, it's not all of the students, but, Mr. Vargas, I, I would just, I believe your caseload is primarily families that are primarily Spanish-speaking.
Yes, so mine is more of the E L.
Oh, you're fine.
You're fine, don't worry about it.
Well aware.
I, I do wanna just call out Mr. Vargas here, specifically cause some of our parents called him out and said, hey, he was the reason that I'm here. When I talked to him before, um, or the reason that I'm part of B P A C when I talked to him before, and just said, hey, what are you, what are you here for? You just, you just here to watch? He was like, hey, I had, he said to me, I have some parents that were here, so I wanted to come, listen to them.
I would guess that he didn't just saw it on a agenda, like, I'm sure there was an invite somewhere along the lines, whether it was said during committee, and sometimes it's all that it takes, it's just someone to say, hey, you're welcome. You're, you're welcome to be invited here, we wanna hear your feedback, and more of whatever happened is welcome.
But I'll say this, you could've sent them and not come.
Yep.
You know, and I'm not, it's no, it's not dissing anyone else, but.
Yeah.
You being here and supporting the people sitting here is really exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
You have a relationship with these, I assume, cause they've mentioned you a hundred times. Like, and I'm not, I'm not deaf, like, they, they have obviously singled you out as one of the most important pieces they have here in this school to be able to function for their kids, right? And so, I think that goes to what we're talking about. And Tony, just asking us to reimagine, a, a friend of mine has this quote at the end of the email, and I, I kept thinking of it as we're talking. And it's from, um, Bishop Desmond Tutu. And it says, uh, there comes a point where we need to stop pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and figure out why they're falling in. And I think that, I mean, I just kept hearing that, I read it this morning, and I keep hearing it tonight, is that we need to stop putting pieces in, putting our fingers in the, in the holes, and start rebuilding the dam in a way that functions for most people. And you being here is just highlighting exactly how that's working, possibly in the future, so, thank you for doing that.
Every four years, everybody's new.
Yeah, yeah.
So our problems today.
Yeah.
Could be different tomorrow, so we have to evolve.
Yes, and that's, I wanted to highlight one of the things you'd said about this, um, nothing about this conversation is a criticism of the staff. Because I think we have amazing staff, and every time I go to open house, I'm also like, all these teachers are fantastic. Um, but, but the population in our school has changed, and sometimes that means that the system by which we organize the people who are serving them, needs to be different.
That's right, and.
Well, and the funding has changed.
One more thing.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I've been in this board for nineteen years. A lot of these people over here have been here that long too.
Yeah.
Right.
And what we did for about eighteen of those nineteen years was bail water.
Yeah.
Yeah, literally at Oak Plain.
Yeah.
Hurt ducks, I've heard, but.
Yeah, they, cause when you.
They're water issues.
You know, one of my favorite sayings is, it's hard to remember the goal to drain the swamp when you're up to your ass in alligators. And we were for a long time.
And, I'm gonna just, uh, you said something about every four years we change. We have a board that's working together on the same page together, you don't always see that. So, I'm gonna add one more piece to this ask, which is timeliness. Like, while we have people that are here for the right reasons, they're not here with agendas behind them. They're, they, I can vouch for everyone on this board right now, genuinely. I don't, well, right now, we have a board that's here for the right reasons, willing to make changes, I would ask it be done in a timely manner. Cause we can kick this can, get a whole new board, and who knows what would happen. So, I, I think the kids that are in our system right now deserve timely change, cause we can't wait for another class of kids to come through and us not adjust, but I think we have the ability to make adjustments. With that being said, we all said a lot. With that being said, we all said a lot, the comments are appreciative. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Weisman. Uh, I think we're done with COW of, for this meeting.
I, I have lots of notes and I'll, I'll, um, we'll, we'll process this probably as a team. And then, in the spirit of timeliness, uh, put this as a discussion item at the next board agenda, or at the next board meeting in two weeks.
Thank you, that's appreciated.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
So, we had a motion to close the COW.
We have a motion to close the meeting, that's second by Mr. Ince.
First we have to close.
Oh, close the, the committee, the whole, motion to close the committee, the whole.
Second.
Roll call.
It, it can be a voice vote.
He tried.
I tried, voice vote, I'll say, we say aye.
Aye.
Poses none, thank you. Now, motion to close the meeting.
Yes.
Second.
That needs to be a roll call.
Motion by Carlson, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.